Thank you all for coming. This is a town hall meeting on underage drinking. River Edge in conjunction with Macon Safe Decisions. And we are going to go ahead and get started. And I'm gonna present to you Latonya Alguastar. She's gonna moderate the program. And we're gonna start with Latonya. Latonya is actually Assistant to Judge Matthews, Juvenile Court.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. As Pam said, this is a town hall meeting regarding underage drinking. And the goal of tonight's town hall meeting is to provide information. It's to share with you a community assessment of conditions that contribute to underage drinking. And then focus on how we can reduce or eliminate those specific environmental conditions. We'll hear topics from our speakers that will answer such questions as, "Do we really have a problem here in Macon regarding underage drinking?" "What efforts are being made in Macon regarding underage drinking?" "What can I do as a parent, as a community volunteer, to help prevent underage drinking?" These questions and several others will be answered by our speakers. I mean, there will be an open forum for questions at the end of each last speaker. So, without further ado, our first speaker is Ms. Pamela Benson. And she's gonna tell us about the Alcohol Prevention Project.
So, we're the Edible General Health Center Prevention Department. Through needs assessments, through what we've done, surveyed in the community, we found that alcohol consumption has been a widely acceptable social occurrence in all age groups in Bev County. So, as a prevention department, we needed to shift, or we want to shift, the common mindset from underage drinking being a socially acceptable rite of passage to understanding the many harmful effects alcohol has on developing brain up to the mid-20s, mid-20 age range, as well as the dangerous implications of alcohol consumption. So, we're trying to go ahead and start focusing on our children because once they start drinking early, it will affect their developing brain. So, through the Alcohol Prevention Project, which is APP, is funded by Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Block Grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is SAMSSO. The Alcohol Prevention Project's goal is to reduce the early onset of alcohol use among 9 through 20-year-olds in East Macon. And this is the area that we're covering. We're covering East Macon, Bev County, 31211 and 31217. Back two years ago, as like I said, we surveyed the communities. We surveyed this area as well as areas outside of Bev County. And we were asked to focus on East Macon because it had the highest rate of early onset of alcohol use, which was like 12-years-old. So, that's why we're focusing on East Macon. And there's another reason, but we'll, you'll hear that later. So, implementing state focus, our implemented state focus on underage drinking is gonna be through social media, Facebook blog, conventional media, TV, radio, newspaper, school engagement, the Red Ribbon Week, town hall meetings, local coalition partnership, and our three strategies, which is Class Action, Sticker Shot, and Shoulder Tap. We're actually in our third year, wrapping up our third year of this grant. And we've been able to implement some strategies this year. And the three strategies, which I just said, was Class Action, Sticker Shot, and Shoulder Tap. Well, Class Action is actually an individual strategy. And what we do, we go into the schools, after-school programs, summer programs, summer camps, and churches, wherever we can be able to implement this. But Class Action is a six-through-eight session curriculum that gives sixth-through-eighth graders empowerment through shared leadership roles for peer-led activities and fun alcohol prevention activities. And then we also have a ninth-to-twelfth grade component. And in this component, these students look at, they look at real-world social and legal consequences involving teens in grades nine through 12 and alcohol. Students are divided in six legal teams to prepare and present hypothetical civil cases in which someone has been harmed as a result of underage drinking. And we're actually implementing that in our upward bound programs. And they come together once a month for four hours at Macon at Villaroy George State College. And they actually go through those cases, such as date rape. They do drinking and driving, violence, alcoholic violence. So, they study these cases and then they actually do a mock trial. So, they've been doing that, and it's been, it's been a real good program. So, the goal is to really, for the students to talk and really think differently about the use of alcohol and to start a new way of talking to others about poor decision-making. The next one is environmental strategy called Sticker Shot Campaign. And this initiative brings awareness towards underage drinking in the community. The stickers are placed in the stores, but we put the stickers on brown bags. And we have window cleans, and these window cleans, we put on the coolers, convenience stores, package stores. And these labels inform the public of the consequences they face if they provide or purchase alcohol for minors. So, the message comes in loud and clear when minors are included in the process by us using our students to actually put the labels on the bags. And we have an event where, we just did that with some students at the Boys and Girls Club. And we had an event where they put the stickers on the bags. And then we had pizza, and they really enjoyed it. We invited the parents to come in and be a part of that. And they were able to win, had a chance to win gift cards. So, it really was a success. And last, our Shoulder Tap Program, which is another environmental strategy. The Decoy Shoulder Tap Program is an enforcement operation that uses minor decoys to identify people who furnish alcohol beverages to minors outside of licensed establishments. And on that note, I'm gonna ask Tammy to come up. She's gonna talk a little bit more about our Shoulder Tap Program.
My name is Tammy Bell. I am the grant specialist here at River Edge. And I also oversee the prevention department. Standing before you today was supposed to be Lieutenant Sinclair, who has been graciously supporting our efforts here with our Shoulder Tap Program. He unfortunately could not be here today. And he is the expert on this program in the community. So, I'm going to try my best to fill in for him. Just to get started, raise your hand if you think that providing alcohol to a minor is illegal. Except in what case? Anyone?
A parent in your household.
A parent in your household.
To your own child.
To your own child. That is correct. I was not aware of this law until the past couple of years. But it is in fact legal to serve your own child alcohol in your own home. Not anyone else's child, but your own child you can serve alcohol to. Of course, this is not recommended because as Pam said earlier, it's very detrimental to the developing brain in children, youth, adolescents, and even young adults up until the age of 25. So, it's not recommended. However, it is illegal. But that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. We're talking about the Shoulder Tap Program as it relates to underage drinking in our community. We've learned through many studies nationwide, even in the state of Georgia, specifically in central Georgia, that underage drinking occurs in many different ways. That alcohol is provided to youth in our communities in many different ways. The most popular ways may surprise you. Do you have any idea what the most prevalent ways that our youth are attaining alcohol is?
Given to them by friends.
Given to them by friends. That is a very popular way. Anyone else? The number-one way that studies show that our youth in our community are receiving alcohol is in fact through their parents, through their own home, whether they're getting alcohol with or without their parents' consent. If not there, they may be finding it at their friend's homes, through their friend's parents' alcohol. If not there, through family events, birthdays, any type of celebration, kids may sneak some alcohol, again, maybe with or without their parents' knowledge. Social hosting is a huge issue and problem in central Georgia, and probably throughout the state and the rest of the country as well, I would assume. But social hosting is a very widely socially acceptable practice in our community. Parents still think it's okay to provide their children and their children's friends alcohol as long as they are supervised, as long as it's at their house, as long as they pick up the keys from their children and their children's friends. Well, we know that that's illegal. And the parents can be thrown in jail for that. I just wanted to mention those few things before I continue on with the Shoulder Tap. Shoulder Tap, does anyone have any idea what that is? This is another, one of the most common ways that kids are getting alcohol if they want. Kids are approaching adults outside of licensed establishments that sell alcohol. I mean, I'm sure you've seen it, heard it, maybe even when you were teens, you heard about this happening, maybe even you participated in it. But underage kids are approaching these adults outside of these establishments and say, "Hey, can I give you $20 and we go and get me a six-pack of beer?" Again, we know that that is illegal. It is a misdemeanor punishable by arrest. But it is happening. And Shoulder Tapping is one of the strategies that have been identified as a great strategy for us and the communities that we're working with to try to work on. So, what we have been doing is working with the local Sheriff's Department. They've been, like I said earlier, they've been gracious and kind and supportive of our efforts here. Last year, our CEO, Shannon Harvey, reached out to the Sheriff's Department, explained to them what we were doing through this grant funded by the DTHDP, and asked for their help with this program. And they, they said, "Absolutely, we're on board. What do you need from us?" And so, we asked them to identify a couple of people in their department who would be willing to work with us on this, this program. They graciously did that. Lieutenant Sinclair is our main contact at the Sheriff's Department. And to date, there have already been four operations this past year. And in this next year of funding, we're hoping that there will be many more to speak of. What is happening is that either through the Sheriff's Department or through River Edge, we are identifying individuals that look underage, whether or not they are, it does not matter, but as long as they look underage. We're asking them to approach adults as they're walking into these licensed establishments and say, "Hey, I'll give you five bucks if you go in and get beer." And if they buy it on it, if they accept the offer and go in and buy alcohol, then they are then arrested because there are police in the area. It's all, it's all, I believe it's video. Correct me if I'm wrong about that. I know that the underage-looking person called the decoy, I mean, I know he is wired, so it's all caught on tape. And then the person is arrested, and then obviously has to go before the judge and explain what happened. Like I said, there have already been four of these today this past year. And out of these four operations, about a fourth of the people who were approached said yes and agreed to go in and buy alcohol underage. Children in our community, they were arrested, and they're being prosecuted. So, that's what you need to keep in mind, that our Sheriff's Department is keeping their eye on this. They are participating in our efforts here. And they are, they are looking at, even before we started this program, they are monitoring whether or not liquor stores or stores that sell alcohol are serving, or selling alcohol without carding individuals. And they have compliance checks to check on that as well. So, that in a nutshell, I've probably taken up more time than I was supposed to be allowed. Sorry. But that in a nutshell is what the Shoulder Tap Program is.
So, they gave a nice introduction to Sticker Shot. I'm gonna give you a little more details about Sticker Shot. Before I start, I'm just gonna give a brief introduction. My name is Hunter Billington, or William, they like to call me that around the office. I'm a student at Mercer University. I'm a senior in Political Science and Communication Studies, double major. And I work for Volunteer Macon. And I also work with Macon Safe Decisions through my work at Volunteer Macon. So, I get to interact with this project. And Sticker Shot specifically was a project that was kind of handed down to me and places my goal over the summer. So, we can talk about it now. So, first, I'm sure everyone is wondering, you kind of have some idea of what Sticker Shot is, but you may not be fully sure what Sticker Shot is. So, Sticker Shot is a community awareness campaign that was designed several years ago to educate persons over 21 who purchase alcohol about the consequences of illegally providing said alcohol to minors. So, unlike other campaigns, we're not aiming at the kids. That is not the goal. Our goal is to educate people who are 21 to provide that to minors and just explain why that is illegal, the consequences of said action. So, our implementation was adopted from two sources primarily. The Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board is, they were one of the original projects, original implementations of Sticker Shot. And then the Main Office of Substance Abuse. So, kind of just a quick summation of what the purpose is. The purpose of Sticker Shot is to reduce youth's access to alcohol through educating adult providers. And at the bottom of the screen, you'll see lots of samples of Sticker Shot projects that have been done in other communities. But I'm explaining to you why ours is a little bit different. So, Project Sticker Shot usually involves placing stickers that warn of the consequences of providing alcohol to minors on bottles and licensed alcohol retailers. Well, instead of stickers, because stickers come with a host of problems, right? They sometimes leave residue. They're sometimes intrusive over the label of the bottle, which a lot of liquor owners find not in good taste, not something they want on their bottles. So, instead of that, we decided to go with bottleneckers. They're completely unintrusive on the bottle, yet at the same time, you're going to see it because it's on top of the bottle when you pick it up. And it takes away a lot of the problems that stickers carry. In addition, Sticker Shot also involves placing signs in local retailers that warn of the consequences, just like the materials we place on the bottles. So, you can see a sample of a sign placed there. Instead of the signs like they described, we did window cleans instead. The window cleans are easily removable. They're pretty easy to put on. They require a little bit just to make sure you get all the bubbles out like anything else. But we actually thought they were really good, and I actually have samples. So, the smallest window cling is about this size. It's a little bit bigger than a postcard, but a little bit smaller. The other way. And then we have the large cling. This is the size of the large cling. And both of these are put up throughout retailers in Macon, which we're actually gonna discuss a little bit further. And then this is the bottlenecker. There are samples of them on the table. If you wanna grab one on the way out, if you didn't get one on the way in. And it just bends and goes on top of the bottle. So, why Project Sticker Shot? Why is this strategy good for our community? So, our data, based primarily on youth surveys, shows that the majority of underage drinking that happens in Macon happens in residential homes and on private property. The majority of underage drinking doesn't happen because alcohol is being bought by the minors, which is what a lot of people seem to think. It happens because persons over 21 are buying the alcohol and providing it to the minors. So, we took on this strategy, and we did it through a couple of steps. The first step of Sticker Shot was to design the Sticker Shot materials. We had several revisions that happened during our design process before we came up with the final product that we think is very eye-catching. We've seen it on a bunch of the storefronts that we've placed it, and it really catches your attention, and I think it was a strong choice. And it was done mostly by the Volunteer Macon staff. Our second step here was to obtain a local retailer list. We were actually able to do this through the city. We went down to City Hall, and they gave us a listing of all the licensed alcohol vendors in Macon. And we were able to identify which ones were in the three core areas that we were trying to target through our project. Those three core areas being Core Macon, North Macon, and the parts of Jones County that don't include the city limits of Bev. Our third step was to contact the retailers by phone. We found this problematic at first because a lot of retailers really aren't responsive to phone calls. You can understand if you were working at a liquor store, for example, the last thing you would wanna do would be answer the phone in the middle of the day. So, we were able to get a couple of retailers through this. But we found visiting them actually to be a more effective strategy, which was step four. So, we followed up with the businesses that had already agreed and visited them in person to set up a time. But we also stopped by other businesses that sometimes weren't as receptive to our project or didn't really have time to talk to us on the phone, to talk to them about our project. So, the next phase, obviously, ordered the materials to put up at the businesses, which we're going to discuss further in a second. We'll talk about the retailers that we were able to obtain. The sixth step, which was really helpful from WGXA, was the media coverage of Sticker Shot. So, WGXA actually covered an event that we held at Blue Moon Package Store. It happened earlier in the month, last month, in which youth from the campus after-school club put bottleneckers on the bottles. And we were able to hang window cleans in the window. And all this was publicized. We actually get to see a video of it later because WGXA is one of our partners on the Macon Safe Decisions Coalition, and they've been extremely helpful. So, our next step, we had the full distribution of materials. It took us approximately a week to get all of the materials out. Some places being harder to reach than others, Jones County being one of them. And the final step, we have to just evaluate the project and plan for future projects and how we can improve. So, participating retailers. We had an overwhelming response in Macon. I was actually extremely pleased. We have 34 retailers that signed on to do the first implementation of Sticker Shot with us. We're actually doing four total implementations. So, this is an excellent number for the first number. The last two, 33 and 34, being representative of Jones County and the region that we have in Jones County. So, what does that look like in terms of distribution of materials? Bottleneckers, we put 2,833 bottleneckers out. They are mainly at liquor stores in Macon, some of the larger liquor stores, such as The Depot, which I know has 500 of our bottleneckers in it currently. And Blue Moon was another. And P&amp;P Liquor Store, there's a large list of them. Large window cling, we put 17 of those up. Most of them are at really visible places in the businesses. A lot of them are behind the counter, right, when you come to the register. And then 40 of the small window clings we put out. So, I have a video. This is actually what WGXA aired.
Underage drinking is illegal, and alcohol, of course, has dangerous effects, and even deadly on young abusers.
New at 10, WGXA's Chase Ambrose is live in studio with information on how a volunteer group is spreading that message. Chase?
Well, the fight against underage drinking is an important one, and one that's now being fought by a community group, youth volunteers, and local liquor stores.
Volunteer Macon is teaming up with youth volunteers and local liquor stores to spread the word about the dangers of underage drinking. Volunteers from the Campus Club After-School Program participated in a Sticker Shot project at the Blue Moon Liquor Store on Pineono Avenue in Macon. Students placed warning labels on bottles of liquor and cases of beer. The labels warn of the legal ramifications of providing alcohol to underage buyers. And having youth help spread the message is an important part of the process.
They always feel that they are a problem because society, I would say, youth do this and youth do that. So, now they wanna be a part of the solution.
The initiative has a lot of support, not just from volunteer organizations, but from the liquor stores themselves.
We have over 28 separate retailers helping us with this push. And again, we are doing this to help show that they are supporting our efforts in keeping alcohol away from youth. Because nobody wants youth drinking. It's not good for their business. It's not good for the youth. And of course, it's not good for the people providing it.
Mercer Police and the Bev County Sheriff's Office accompanied the group for the event.
Now, this was the first of many planned Sticker Shot events. Live in studio, Chase Ambrose, WGXA.
All right, so at the end of that, you got to see that he said this is the first of many planned Sticker Shot events. We're planning on doing three more for four total. And you also heard on there where he said we had 28 retailers. That number actually went up since we did Blue Moon Package Store, and we're up to that number 34 that we're at currently. All right, so what's next for Project Sticker Shot? Project Sticker Shot is usually completed in cycles. This year, we plan to have three more cycles of Sticker Shot for four total. The second cycle, we're expecting to start in October and finish probably around December 2014. And other phases, I believe the next one is set to start in February after that.
Be the Wall is a social marketing campaign originally created in Florida in the mid-2000s. The goal of this campaign was to inform parents, as well as community members, about the role they play in influencing youth's decision to drink. What makes this campaign different is that unlike many campaigns, the target demographic is not the youth themselves. The target instead are the adults that the kids interact with on a daily basis. Family members, community members, friends. By influencing the adults in these kids' lives, the campaign hopes to change behavior on a deeper level by affecting the environment in which the kids live. Be the Wall also doesn't take part in what's known as fear campaigning. Fear campaigning, for those unaware, is when an organization or campaign attempts to scare people, usually young people, into changing their behavior. Studies have shown that this type of marketing is often ineffective. And many times, even when it is effective, the changes in behavior are only temporary. In contrast, an environmental campaign, such as Be the Wall, attempts to change societal norms or what types of behavior that people think is acceptable. If you can change that, you have a much better chance of improving the decisions, not only of those people directly reached by the campaign, but of the people around them by changing the culture in which they live. For instance, if you live in a place that tells you it's okay or normal to drink underage, then you don't think about it. However, if it's viewed as wrong or unacceptable by those around you, you're far more likely to make a smart and informed decision. Be the Wall messaging itself refers to what the viewers will take away from the campaign, that they, be they parents, older siblings, family, friends, or community members, put themselves between youth and alcohol. In addition, Be the Wall doesn't attempt to demonize alcohol or those illegal adults who drink it, but merely strives to inform people of the dangers it poses to underage drinkers and how they can help kids make good decisions, that they be the wall between kids and alcohol. And being the wall can come in many different shapes and sizes. It can mean to physically prevent youth from having access to alcohol by blocking the liquor cabinet or not letting them go to a location where you suspect alcohol might be being served to underage drinkers. But there's more to it than that. Being the Wall is also about having honest discussions with kids about alcohol, talking about the dangers of underage drinking, such as the increased risk of physical harm, the increased risk of sexual assault, the increased risk of teen pregnancy. It's about talking to them about the biological effects of consuming alcohol under the age of 21. Like the fact that their brains are, even at that late stage, still growing and building connections. And then imbibing alcohol can slow or even halt those processes. Most importantly, being the wall is about those people already in the kid's life, teaching them to make good decisions when, or especially when no one else is around. Teaching kids how to deal with peer pressure and letting them understand that they aren't making these decisions for you. They're making them for their own good. These are the lessons that the Be the Wall campaign hopes to convey to the community. Originally, Be the Wall was created as a print media campaign. Posters and flyers would be placed around town, articles written in the paper, even logos drawn out of the pavement with sidewalk chalk. However, we felt that here in Macon, Georgia, we would be able to... However, we felt that here in Macon, Georgia, we would be able to reach a larger audience and thus have a greater impact if we're able to adapt the Be the Wall message to a video campaign. With that in mind, we began creating, writing, and filming local PSAs, all with the blessing of founders of the Be the Wall campaign. The PSAs were all created by us in-house and were filmed in the community with local community members where possible. The first of these PSAs has already been airing here locally on WGXA, which is Fox and ABC, our media partners, and we're currently working on producing even more for dissemination throughout the rest of the year and the next year, the coming year. As such, I'd like to close by showing you two PSAs. Get excited, we're going to see things. It's going to be fun. Our first is the original PSA, which is already running on Fox and ABC. You may have even seen it on TV already. The second, however, I can guarantee you haven't seen, because it's going to be our world premiere of sorts. It should begin running on TV sometime in the coming weeks, so keep an eye out, we'll probably see it on Fox and ABC. After that, while I'll open up the floor for any additional questions you guys have regarding the campaign, other than that, let's get on to the show, right?
Our kids face so many obstacles as they grow, but they should never face them alone because they have you. Talk to your kids today about the dangers of underage drinking. Be the wall between your kids and alcohol. Our kids are asked to make decisions every day, often without thinking about the long-term consequences. Together, we can help them make the right decision. Be the wall between your kids and alcohol.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having me here tonight to speak to you. I'm going to focus a little bit more on policy changes. Policy changes are generally considered the highest tier of environmental strategies, the longest-lasting producing effects and behavior changes in the population. My name is Michael Yonasey. I work at Volunteer Macon and I chair the Macon Safe Decisions Coalition, which is a ground for provincial professionals and organizations to come together and kind of cross-reference each other, see what everybody's up to, feed information back and forth, share data, and focus test a lot of the materials that you shared with you. We'll see a little bit later. Let's get to it. So my ultimate goal here is to not have you completely convinced that we need a stop of those commitments we did. My executive director was working with our legal team while I was on vacation. I came back and she said that, well, the lawyers were just, they just didn't see a justification for it. And that included going through our issue brief, was a document available on the back, and everything else that we've done up to date, including just the raw statistics. So I'm hoping today that maybe I can justify it to everyone in this room, that it's something that we should be thinking about as a city, as a community. As far as local data goes, you've heard some of the numbers referenced in various shapes and forms in other presentations. This is kind of a very simple breakdown of the age of bond stats, which is what we call it, but it's when kids tend to have their first drink. As far as the Macon youth go, you have ten percent that tend to start drinking between the ages of ten to twelve. How does that sound to you guys? No, we've already talked about developmental effects. Well, developmental effects operate on a curve, so the older you get, the less of an impact there is under development. So that means that the earlier you start drinking, the more at risk you are for things that are going wrong, bodily and mental. Twenty-two percent begin drinking from the ages of thirteen to seventeen. Still, that's a lot. We're talking middle school to high school. And then coming at only ten percent are drinking between the ages of eighteen to twenty for their first drink. Now, in a more functional environment, or an ideal environment, I should say, you might expect for the longitude to be switched, maybe ten percent in the first age group, ten percent in that high school, middle school group, and then we almost kind of expect socially, as our norms go, for kids to start drinking when they're in college, in the undergrad ages, for better or for worse. But that's not actually the case here in Macon. Additional data from the survey, these are questions about ease of access. Now, the questions are very simple and it's new. How easy would it be for you to obtain alcohol? And the answer on a like current scale, that's really hard to really easy. Thirty-seven percent of that ten to twelve year range said that it would be easy to get the alcohol. That's ten to twelve year olds. Forty-nine percent said it would be easy thirteen to seventeen age range. So we've now got over half of our kids, age ten to seventeen, are telling us that it's easy for them to get alcohol. And we've already talked about it earlier, where are they getting this alcohol? Why is it so easy? Parents, family members, older siblings, those people in the household with it. And then not surprising that eighty-seven percent, maybe to the twenty-year-olds, would say that it's easy to obtain it. So the bigger question is again, where and when are they obtaining the alcohol? Through the other presentations, we've eliminated the liquor stores to some extent, being like the primary culprit. They're really not violating their liquor licenses and selling to minors on a frequent basis. It's people of age that completely buy the alcohol that are providing it. So responses are pretty consistent. The sample size was right around eleven hundred, and this is our youth telling us. And the questions are on the next slide, you'll see them in a minute. It's weekend parties during the evening and nighttime. That's primarily where drinking happens. So where do we think weekend parties are going to be in the evening or nighttime? Somebody's house? Somebody's house. Demographics are not an issue here. In fact, in most of the data that we saw, demographics are relevant. It doesn't matter if you're black, you're white, Hispanic. The underage drinking issues are pretty much the same across the board. If you can see these ones up in the back, these are just some questions that were sampled from the survey, and this is the way they were asked. There are lots of options to pick from. They weren't encouraged to respond in some way over surveys. There are lots of different options they report that they drink on the way to, and some do, by the way. We have nine to ten-year-olds that say they drink on the school bus on the way to school, in the public school system. After-school, driving around. The weekend parties were the biggest. So general consequences of these weekend parties where they are claiming to drink. There's an increased social availability. There's nobody really monitoring these parties. And even the parents who do allow it, allow it under this guise of, oh, I didn't know that was going to happen. That's the basement, I don't go down there. The kids do what they're going to do down there. For everybody involved, it creates a decreased perception of risk of underage drinking in general. If, you know, fifteen-year-old Bobby sees fifteen-year-old Jake having a beer and everybody's fine the next day, Bobby's no more likely to have a drink the next time they're hanging Increased perception of risk and penalties. When you don't see someone getting in trouble for something that you know is wrong, your perception lowers that anything's going to happen if you do participate with something wrong. Increases in property damage and increases law enforcement time and resources that are used to respond to calls. A lot of these are already kind of in the form of noise violations. And there are increased emergency calls and accidents. So here we are, we're trying to work on this justification just a little bit. Would everyone here agree from the presentation they've heard so far that there is a problem in Macon that we need to be talking about? Yes, okay, that's step one. Good. We've already talked about policy changes as being the kind of ultimate environmental strategy. So you're going to see PSAs in a few minutes from press, and those are wonderful tools and they are environmental strategies, but what happens to those PSAs when the grant money runs out and you can't pay the TV stations to have them on air? They just disappear. Right. The funding has to keep it going. The advantage of a policy change is that you do all the work in the beginning, you get the policy change to happen, and then worry about enforcement and self-perpetuation. Policy changes tend to address more variables and factors that are involved in these strategies. And I put a picture of the logic model up just to kind of prove that point. You probably can't retest. With this top right box, the one that has the most errors coming from it, that's the policy change, that's the social host ordinance. If it impacts more of these variables contribute to the onset of drinking, if they can do. Sticker shock can only hit two. The media campaign only contributes to one. So initiating a policy change in a kind of a practical sense is one of the most effective strategies that you can have. So if we keep talking about social host and social host ordinance, I thought it would be good to kind of wrap up by talking about what it really is. Now, social host ordinances exist around the country, so on the state level, I think there's almost twenty states that have one in some shape or form, many more in local municipality or county government forms. At the end of the day, they hold the property owner liable for the drinking that occurs on their property. So if you are a parent and the police come knocking, you can't say, I didn't know, I didn't buy it through them, you can't give me a ticket for that. You still get fined, you still have a penalty. There's a little bit of ambiguity that has to be worked out when it comes to rental properties, because in different forms of the ordinance, some places hold the rental properties, the leasing company, whoever it is that actually owns that space legally liable, and then the rental property has to build in to their contracts. Some clauses says, if we get fined for your actions, that's coming to you. And that's okay, that's very, very common. Other places bypass it completely and just say it goes to the person whose name releases it. So another great viable option. Some people have a hard time grasping why they should be responsible for underage drinking on their property, and the best way it's been explained to me is this swimming pool metaphor. So if you own a pool, you're legally responsible for absolutely anything and everything that happens in that swimming pool. You could be away on vacation, someone could hop in your yard and get hurt your swimming pool, and you're still going to have a lawsuit or something. Some have problems. Underage drinking kind of, not the exact same thing, but the metaphor still fits. It's your space, you're responsible for it. You have to put the barriers up between the alcohol, you have to build the fence around it if you have it in your home, you have to make sure it's not accessible to your kids, your friends, their friends, anyone who might provide it to them. Social host ordinances can be either civil or criminal, and that's still being kind of sorted out by the legal team, but I think we're definitely, probably going to be looking at a more criminal approach for Macon. Rising fee scales are appropriate. In our last conversations with the police, they wanted a fine on the first offense, not a warning, probably something around two hundred dollars, and then escalated to five hundred, a thousand, and the criminal charges from there. But that's for them to work out. The fee has to have, in order for it to be enforceable effectively, has to have cost recovery built in. So once they tell us exactly how much it costs for them to respond to a call, where they might be able to give out one of these tickets, then we'll adjust the fine schedule accordingly, and it helps to make it more enforceable in the end. Lots of policies get passed everywhere that are never enforced, and that's a horrible thing, and it doesn't help anyone if it's not enforced. So as of today, this is kind of, everything is going on apace. Law enforcement's working on the fine schedule, really the cost recovery. Our legal team has been researching other ordinances. We have the leading expert nationally who's advising the local legal team. They're still trying to isolate the best models for Macon, then from the ordinances that already exist, so that we don't have to re-induct the legal if it's not necessary. And they're going to have a finally finalized draft of the policy language in the next couple of months. As far as the coalition goes, partnering with Wake Forest, they provide a lot of our training, which is fantastic, and we're seeing them in local Kentucky at the end of this month, another week. They'll be like, how you doing? Are things going well? Or could do better? That's a part of that partnership since long ago. We're continuing to gather local data, so if you have any avenues of data and you'd like to contribute, they're always looking at different ways to view the underage drinking issue, so we can talk about it different ways to different ways of people. The medical community looks at it in a very different way than where they appear on us, for example. Any local partnerships, we're starting to get together logos for people who are not behind having their name affiliated with our issue groups as they come out, just kind of talking about the updates on data analysis and how things are moving. We're distributing information at PSAs, which we should have about ready, which are bringing kind of just a general awareness of underage drinking. We have to start small. We can't jump out there and say, hey, we need a social host ordinance. We have to do enough to start having conversations for people to start viewing underage drinking as a real problem here in Macon, and then we can get to the policy conversation as a community. And finally, just looking for less resource and support, and this is parents and community members, people who go out there and have those conversations, maybe they're having dinner with their neighbor and they're like, hey, have you read anything about underage drinking? Did you get the Macon Telegraph? You've read the Sunday's edition, Cuff-Boos included, and there's a whole big feature about the social host ordinance, and they're trying to do some coalition. So it's just that, that whole kind of stuff really, really helps. And ultimately, we hope to have a policy passed next year. Any questions?
What was the hesitation, why did the law destroy counsel? Who was the hit though?
I think it's the logic. The logic model is not included in the issue brief version that they were given, and then sometimes it's really hard to use all of this data, because there's so many different sources. Part of education has a data set, the CDC has a different data set, everyone's got that. Wake Forest, we're doing random sampling surveys with mailers, we're actually sending out to houses that have underage kids in them. And bringing that all together in a way paints the best argument. Yes, it's kind of work in progress. Does that answer the question? Thank you so much.
I just wanted to piggyback off of what Michael just said, just for a minute, kind of as a rewind. You've just heard from members of Volunteer Macon and River Edge about the policies that we're trying to implement to target underage drinking. Well, the ultimate goal for both of our agencies is to work toward putting policies in place in social host ordinances and just whatever it takes to address this issue that we have in central Georgia. But what I want you to know at this point is that we didn't just sit around in a group one day and decide, hey, for fun, for kids, why don't we just see if we can start working on passing some social ordinances in central Georgia? Just as a little bit of background, we probably should have started with this. Every year, the federal government, they take a look at what's going on in our country and they try to pinpoint areas that need fixing or tweaking or being worked on. About forty years ago, the federal government took a look at our nation and said underage drinking is a huge problem in our country. They came to this assessment from lots of data, research. They came to this assessment from lots of data research, lots of data that was being reported about underage individuals who had substance abuse and abuse issues. So the powers that be in our capital decided that they were going to use federal dollars to support initiatives all across the country that target underage drinking. So they allotted a certain amount of money to SAMSA, which is a federal agency, and SAMSA stands for Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. So they gave SAMSA all this money, and they said, okay, SAMSA, we would like for you to distribute this money to agencies across the country, or to states across the country, and tell them to work on the problem of underage drinking across the country. So SAMSA releases grant opportunity, and the state of Georgia, through the Department of Behavioral Health and Disabilities, applied for this grant, they received the funding, and as a result, they put out a grant statewide in which, I believe, Volunteer Macon and River Edge and I think 57 other agencies in the state of Georgia received money to target underage drinking in our state. So we're not alone here in Macon. They're all over the state of Georgia, we're working on trying to reduce and prevent underage drinking. And the overarching goal for this particular grant in Volunteer Macon is actually, they're working under a couple of different grants with these same initiatives, but under this particular grant, the overarching goal is to reduce the underage drinking by putting policies, or working toward putting policies and ordinances in place. So that's how this came to be, we didn't just come up with this on our own. This is being driven nationally by the federal temperament, if that helps you to paint a broader, more comprehensive picture of what we're trying to do here. And also, we are not competing for space here with Volunteer Macon, we are actually, we're working together, we're in the coalition with them, and we have different areas that we're targeting, so between both of us, I believe, we're encompassing all of central Georgia, all of the counties that encompass central Georgia. So hopefully, with all of your help and help of many others in our community, we'll be able to make some positive changes.
Well, I just so happened to have a few questions, it's been silent. How many liquor licenses were given in 2010? Within our community?
So I can actually answer this, you can just talk from here? Okay, perfect.
Alright, so the number of liquor licenses in Macon we were able to obtain through City Hall, they were actually really receptive in giving us this data. They are, there are a total of 557 liquor licenses that are currently out in Macon Bib, this includes both active and inactive liquor licenses. Just so you can see how the growth in liquor licenses in Macon has happened, in 2012, this is only businesses that are new businesses that apply for a license, so this doesn't include businesses that have already had a license, but in 2012, they had 51 new businesses apply for a license. Just so you can see how dramatic the rise is, in 2013, they had 143 apply for licenses. So that's over, what, a 300% jump from the year before? You have to figure into that, businesses obtaining multiple licenses at the same time, but for the most part, that change you can see in just a large number of new businesses that provide alcohol being available in the communities.
And do you happen to know, those that applied, did all of them actually receive their licenses?
We do not actually, we were not able to get through the city the data of the actual applications, that is just the number that were actually granted.
So I'm sure the number of applications is probably higher.
And I just so happened to have another question. Can anyone be a part of the shoulder tab? How do you volunteer? Or if I have a church that has many volunteers that would want to support the campaign? Is that possible?
Yes, that is possible, and we would love to have volunteers from your churches or friends, kids, neighborhood kids, or actually, I mean, the volunteer needs to be at minimum a teenager or a young adult that actually looks like they're underage, but we would welcome those volunteers, you can just reach out to us at River Edge and let us know if you have people in your house that might have an allergy or a worm, if you know of people.
Yeah, any questions, you may talk to Ms. Field or Ms. Benson after the meeting, and please feel free to get information that's on the back table that they've laid out and good work and continue on. Thank you all.
Oh, more refreshments?